Thank you and good evening to all of you who are joining us this evening for our study session. So I am going to begin by calling this meeting to order. It is exactly 5:00 PM and it's May 26th, which happens to be my granddaughter's 16th birthday today. So it's a big day at our family. We will begin the study session by first talking to you about the protocol in the virtual study session. So I will welcome again to the study session of the Mesa Public Schools Governing Board. On March 30th, 2020, Governor Doug Ducey announced that Arizona schools would be closed for the rest of the year due to the COVID-19 health crisis. In early April, when his stay-at-home order was issued, governmental functions, including school board meeting, governing board meetings, were exempted from the order. So while it is legal to have an in-person school district governing board meeting, our district is choosing to exercise safe social distancing for our meetings by using a virtual meeting platform. The following will be the rules we are using for our meetings. Although members of the board are not gathered in a central physical location, we do have a quorum in attendance at this meeting by video conference, or in this case, all by video conference. There's no telephone call, board member, tonight. We are meeting by use of WebEx conferencing platform and live streaming through YouTube, which allows for members of the public to view and/or listen to this meeting. You can access the live stream at MPSAZ.org/live, which is on your screen. If you need accommodations, please contact Martha Head, Assistant to the Superintendent and Governing Board, and that number also is on our screen before your eyes, but it's 480-472-0201. Next, all the other meeting procedures will adhere to board-adopted procedures to the extent practical under these situations and circumstances. A recording from this meeting will be available to the public via our district's Board Docs online software within three business days of the meeting. We apologize in advance for any unforeseeable difficulties and ask for your patience as we navigate unprecedented conditions. Thank you. And with that, we are going to start by... The strategic plan is on our schedule tonight for our study session. And I understand, is it Dr. Forless is going to lead us in that discussion?
Good evening, Chairman President, members of the board. It is my pleasure to bring to you an update on our strategic planning process thus far. We have spent a lot of time talking about strategic planning. I'm going to turn it to Mrs. Helen Hollins, who is going to kind of give us a look back, and then I will bring us into the look forward.
My apologies, everybody.
Helen, we hear you.
So I will kick off the strategic plan look backwards while we... Oh, she's back on.
My apologies, I got totally kicked out of the meeting, but I have returned. So let me do a reshare on that screen. If I get kicked out again, Enoch will ask you to take control so that we don't have an issue going forward with this. But let me try this reshare. Okay, thank you. And I apologize for that technical glitch. It is exciting to be able to come back and share with you, the governing board, as well as the public, a quick review of where we've been on the strategic plan development process and where we are going. So these first couple of slides are going to go quick because I think you have seen them, and hopefully they will remind you of the path that we have taken. As you recall, we talked about the strategic plan... Sorry, that was a little too quick for me. We talked about the strategic plan really helping us focus our work that we'll be doing in Mesa Public Schools and an approach of continuously improving. And as we described previously, what this allows us to do is really bringing to focus the work that needs to be done and push to the side some of the work that maybe we do that doesn't have the outcomes that we hope for and allows us to really put our efforts, our energies, our time, and our talents against that, which will make a difference for each of our students. The strategic plan is firmly grounded in our promise. The promise that resonates so well with so much of our community, resonates with our staff, resonates with our students. And as you know, that is that every student in Mesa Public Schools is known by name, served by strength and need, and graduates ready for college, career, and community. You've seen our pathway to the promise prior. It all started and ends with our promise that was adopted in September of 2017. The pathway shows you the numerous times we have reached out to our employee groups, our community groups, our student groups, to help us understand what our needs were, help us understand what our community wanted in a strategic plan, and really help us develop the portrait of a Mesa Public Schools graduate, which we were able to introduce to you in September of 2019. From there, we continued our work with additional community groups, employee groups, and parent groups to bring us to the strategic goals that you know so well and that we have been working toward implementing as part of the strategic plan. As a reminder, here's the portrait of our graduate with our three essential attitudes and our five essential skills, from ethical, inclusive, and resilient to collaborative, communicator, community contributor, creative thinker and innovative, and critical thinker and problem solver. The five strategic goals that will help us reach the portrait of a graduate and in turn our promise are to ignite a culture of learning and well-being, ensure equity, achieve college, career, community readiness, align our resources, and engage our community. And we've put this graphic together to help our community and everyone understand how these build on each other and how it will help us achieve the ultimate goal of the promise for each of our students. When we last met with you, we had several key activities planned for the spring semester. One was to engage stakeholders in a review and refinement of both the portrait of a graduate look fours and the strategic goals, actions, and progressions that we had drafted previous to our last meeting. We were then going to also engage stakeholders in the co-development of key performance indicators and the co-creation of the implementation and communication plans. And you may recall Dr. Forless explaining what we called our kind of a cordial model of doing that, which is taking the portrait of the graduate look fours and the strategic goals and taking them out to large groups of individuals to get feedback and refinement from them, and then bringing it back into the steering committee. Because the steering committee, as you recall, and Mrs. Hutchinson and Mrs. Minor have been part of, they truly are the guiding force from the very beginning, that core group of individuals that understand not only where we have come from, but where we are trying to go with the strategic plan. But we also know that we need to go out to large groups of individuals to make sure that it resonates with them. So this is our cordial model of taking it out to groups and bringing that into the steering committee helped us balance that being true to the initial goals and cause of the strategic plan, but also ensuring that the voices of many were reflected in the plan that was going forward. So we were able to accomplish, prior to some of the changes this spring, two very important steps in our movement forward. And that was holding the work groups for the look fours and strategic goals and bringing that back to the steering committee for review and refinement. So on February 24th, after having had some great training from one of our partners at ALP, our consultant, we had six work groups that were facilitated by partner teams of steering committee members and superintendency members. And that was an important design aspect of putting the work groups together by having a steering committee member, again, someone who had been part of this process from the beginning, and pairing them with superintendency team members, who we know are going to be the glue of the strategic plan going forward. And each of those work groups had anywhere from 18 to approximately 26 people. And they each spent a half-day going through either the goal that they were assigned or the look fours that they were assigned, so that they could ensure that the language that was being used was understandable, that there was a commonality in it, and that the framework that had been designed had an understandable sequence and reasoning behind them. Then on March 5th, we brought the steering committee together to look at the feedback on the documents from those six work groups and come up with the finalized documents, in particular, for the five strategic goals. We have posted all of those and have them as living documents for everybody on our current website for the Portrait of a Graduate Strategic Plan, which you see there. And as we discuss in the future, the communication and implementation, that will morph into its very own website to be able to celebrate the accomplishments of the strategic plan and share with our community the progress that we will be making on the strategic plan. So if there are any questions about that history, I think I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Forless to talk a little bit about the future.
So as we look to the future, we've talked a lot about what is the look and the feel of the Portrait of a Graduate need to look like. So if you move on to the next slide, you will see that our communications department has done a really nice job of identifying symbols. And these symbols will be very important as we work with implementation, so that not only our community, but our teachers, and most importantly, our parents and our students understand what do these graphics mean. And as we've talked so much about, these essential attitudes of the Portrait of a Graduate are highlighted here as being ethical, inclusive, and resilient. And then the essential skills that Mrs. Holland spoke about earlier to the right. What we find important about this particular graphic is it gives us some common language. We are able to use some of the common words. It makes it sound very understandable, regardless of the grade level or the audience that is reading it. And so when I look at this Portrait of a Graduate, we had thought long and hard when school closure happened. We can go to the next slide, Helen. We thought long and hard when school closure came our way, that we were going to pause the work of the strategic plan, and not to get rid of it, but just say, we're going to put that to the side because we needed to align our talent and we needed to align our time to properly closing down school and reinventing a new model to get us through the end of the school year. So we haven't had a lot of conversation. We have not assembled the steering committee. But what happened was, we started to notice that the strategic plan started to implement itself. Many of the conversations, and if you want to flip back one more slide, Helen, back to our Portrait of the Graduate. As we think about school closure, so many times we have talked about resiliency. As I listened to graduation speeches last week, we spoke about resiliency and being resilient. We talked about our kids working relentlessly and so very hard to communicate and to collaborate in new and different ways. We talked about the ethical decisions that we were working through with school closure. We talked about creative thinking and innovation that was happening among our staff and our students who were reinventing what public education looked like right before our very eyes. So all of a sudden, conversations started to happen. We started having conversations about equity. We started having conversations around the social-emotional needs of our children. And we said, oh my goodness, the strategic plan is beginning to implement itself. So we are riding the wave of implementation. And if you click on to our equity goal... I'm going to turn it over to Jennifer Echols, who's been working very hard with a group that rose some equity questions as soon as school closed. So I'll give you a quick story about this. So as we assembled a coronavirus team that meets twice a week, that was focusing on, what is it going to look like? What does school look like now that we're closed? And in that work, the president of our Administrator Association, Brayden Minarsik, raised a question in one of our teams and said, you know, we've got a lot of principals really, really worried about equity right now. Can we form a small group and that small group start tackling, what does that look like? Well, the minute that small group of principals came together, we thought, my goodness, this is aligned to the work of our strategic plan goal titled "To Ensure Equity." So that work ramped up. And so I will turn it over to Jennifer Echols as I will walk us through the design of the goal and also that extended work, not only with the steering committee, but also with that small group of principals.
Thank you, Dr. Forless. Helen, would you mind clicking on the link for the "Ensure Equity" goal? As Dr. Forless mentioned, the school closure really increased our awareness of our needs in the area of equity. But something else that it's done is it has allowed us to shine a light on things that we're doing really well. And so the charge before us now is to take those bright spots and make them the norm rather than the exception. And so the "Ensure Equity" goal that you see in front of you now, as Helen mentioned, is the result of a lot of feedback groups, most recently in February and March, with different work groups who really dug into that equity goal and made sure that it represented our needs here in Mesa. And one of the biggest edits that you'll see to that goal since the last time you saw it was the organization into four different areas, the culture of equity, professional learning, instructional practices, and equitable systems. And organizing the goal into those four areas really made it more accessible and understandable for everybody. Like all of our other goals, the "Ensure Equity" goal is set up as a progression. And as a reminder, our intention is to start moving everybody over to the right. So we want them in that "Advocate" column when they're thinking about their own practice. But setting up the goal as a progression allows every individual and teams to look at the document and reflect on their own practice and identify where they are now and what are their opportunities for growth. One of the things that really stands out to the team when we look at this document is that equity is a lot more than access to devices or the internet. Professional learning and instructional practices are at the heart of this goal. And so it's really broadened our understanding of what we mean when we talk about equity. In order for us to think about equity as a lens for decision-making, it means that we have to have a common language and shared understanding of a lot of concepts around equity, including the origins of inequity. And so we have some difficult conversations, but necessary conversations in front of us. And you can see that we've built in a way for those conversations to happen through the culture of equity and professional learning parts of this goal. At the bottom of that document, if you'll scroll down, Helen, please, you'll see some things that say "dimensions of inequality." And these were some things that the work groups really identified as things that we need to be talking about and thinking about when it comes to equity. And we had a difficult time fitting them into the goal itself. And so we ended up leaving them down at the bottom of the document. And we weren't sure if they would be there in its final form. But what's happened now is that the group of principals that is working with equity and doing some work around the key performance indicators is going to use those dimensions of inequality to help them develop the key performance indicators. And I know Robert's going to talk more about the work that that group of principals is doing with the development of those key performance indicators. One other thing that we have on our horizon is doing some work this summer in our Leadership Academy with our school and district leaders around the Portrait of a Graduate, especially through the lens of equity. So thinking about, how do we get to those outcomes in the Portrait of a Graduate through the lens of equity? And so we're really excited to start that work again with our school leaders. And I know that Tracy is going to, Dr. Yezes is going to talk about that some more later on in the presentation. So I'm going to pause there, and I don't know if we're going to do questions on individual pieces now or wait till the end, but I'd be happy to answer any questions that might be about the goal itself and the framework.
Thank you, Jennifer. I think we'll get through the presentation and then we'll... Because we might answer some questions along the way. So we've got plenty of time at the end.
Dr. Forless, may I just add a thought here as I've just seen the first elements of the slides? It is remarkable that, under challenging circumstances, how they shed some light on the important work that we're doing as a district. And when you take a look at the strategic goals and you were moving in this direction, I think, Dr. Forless, when you started to talk about equity. But we're in the midst of trying to ignite a culture of learning, just not quite sure what it'll look like in another couple of months. You know, that we're developing that mindset and this notion of well-being, whether, you know, wherever a student is learning, that we need to have a focus and a plan to take care of the well-being of our teachers, our staff, and our students. And you already talked about ensuring equity, aligning resources. We've spent several months discussing the budget matrix and what that means moving forward and what kind of dollars may come from federal grants and the CARES money and how we would integrate that, money saved under the circumstances that need to be redirected to better use as we're moving forward, or how we're managing the distribution or allocation of teacher contracts. All of those things have, we have a heightened awareness of those items just based on the conditions that we're in right now, and they're all part of these goals. So that lends itself to all of the great work that people have done leading up to this point. These goals are connected with the most challenging of circumstances that could be presented to our students, parents, and our staff. So it really is an interesting, you know, I guess, alignment of where we're at and what the goals represent for Mesa Public Schools.
Thank you, Dr. Lesser, for putting all of that together into a really nice package. And that does a really nice job of summarizing how, when I say that the strategic plan started to implement itself, that's very much of what Dr. Lesser was just talking about, is we are realizing we are going back into these documents and taking a look at them. So it was time to bring it back in front of you so we can continue to march forward. And as we move on to the next slide, Dr. Robert Carlyle is going to talk to us a bit about the developing key performance indicators. What is really important throughout the process of developing the strategic plan has been leaning into the strengths of those within Mesa Public Schools. And it has been very exciting to watch the research and evaluation team come together with our consultants and principals and teachers to talk about, what does it look like when we are going to measure our effectiveness? And in this case, we're just focusing on one of our goals. So I'm going to turn this over to you, Robert, and you can walk us through this slide.
Thank you, Dr. Forless. So what we're trying to do with the key performance indicators is come up with ways that resonate with people on how to measure where we are on the progressions towards accomplishing our goals or reaching the point where we're on the "Advocate" side of those goals. And so what we're, our idea and what we're doing is we're going to take an "understand by design" approach to developing these key performance indicators. And the "understand by design" approach has people start with the end in mind and have them work back. So what that means is we want to, in step one of the "understand by design" approach, we want to identify the desired results. So when we work, look at the goal of ensuring equity, if we are 100% there, if we have accomplished everything we want to in ensuring equity across the district, what does that look like? What are the things that people are doing? What are the things that students are doing? What have we accomplished? So we look at those results, and then we take a step back and say, what is the evidence? Or what are the things that would show us that we have accomplished those things? What are the... What's the endpoint? What's the marker? What's the goal point, so to say, for when we know we've gotten that desired result? And then in the third step of the "understand by design" approach, we plan the learning, the instruction, and the interventions that we need in order to reach or accomplish those desired results and accomplish those evidences, get to those evidences. So like I said, those goal progressions are our guide. We're looking at those goal progressions and we're saying, okay, as we look at these progressions, what are our desired results? What does that look like? And now let's look at how we're going to determine whether we've reached the endpoint on those progressions. So what we're starting to do is we're developing those work groups that are going to look at those progressions. And then from there, they're going to develop the first two steps. They're going to identify the desired results. And then they're going to determine what the evidences are for when we've reached those desired results. And then those will become our KPIs. And then those KPIs are going to go back to steering committee and I imagine other work groups and things like that to then start using those KPIs and those desired results to develop the learning and the instruction and the interventions that the district needs in order to start moving towards reaching and accomplishing those KPIs. So currently, we're in the process of developing those KPIs for the "Ensuring Equity" goal. And the group is super excited about moving forward and determining these. And so we're excited to move forward with that.
Thank you, Robert. Also, it's important to know that with the steering committee conversations, there was a lot of talk around, how are we going to show the public? How are we going to communicate this great work that we're doing in Mesa Public Schools? So as soon as we wrap up the development of the strategic plan along with the key performance indicators, we will have, what we have envisioned is like progress meters on our website that show where we are and how we are moving through the journey towards some very big and bold goals for Mesa Public Schools. So think about those KPIs as a way of telling our story of progress throughout our journey with the strategic plan. And if we go on to the next slide?
So one of the nice things is that we have been using a consultant during our entire strategic planning process. Mrs. Richardson, you'll recall, because I believe you sat on the RFP committee, that at the very beginning of this, we did go out for an RFP and a consultant. And that RFP was awarded to Dell EMC. And Dell EMC uses a number of their own partners in helping districts understand their role in moving education forward. And the partner that we have been working with since the beginning is Advanced Learning Partnerships, or ALP. And they bring a wealth of knowledge and a wide variety of skills and talent to the table. They are nationally known, and most frequently, when we asked Amos Thodchak, who's the head of ALP, for some... of ALP, for some advice, he will direct us to a national school district that he has worked with, either as an individual district or as part of the state-level consortium, to help us understand the possibilities we have with our strategic plan. Well, in the most recent negotiation for technology purchases, David Sanders, who is our head negotiator in that, we awarded that contract to Dell. And as part of the negotiation, we were awarded 25 additional professional learning days from Dell. These are part of the contract with no additional cost to us. And because of our partnership with them on the strategic plan, they have passed those days through to Advanced Learning Partnerships, to ALP, to continue the work of the strategic plan. We had come very close to reaching the end of our contract with ALP, which was primarily designed to help us develop the plan. And these 25 days are going to help us with the implementation of the strategic plan, which we are so excited to have them continue side by side with us on that. So the areas that we'll be focusing on with our consultants is to, one, complete the key performance indicators. Similar to us reaching out to expertise in our district, Dr. Carlisle and his team about data acquisition and what the data does and probably more importantly, doesn't tell you. ALP also has different expertise in their organization. So Robert has been working with their organizational psychologist on how to measure changes in our organization through these KPIs. They will also be providing implementation guidance and structure for our users to help them really envision how this looks in their day-to-day life, in their day-to-day work, and in the lives of our students. They will help us activate organizational change leadership. That's the governing board, the superintendent's executive team, the individuals who really have to walk the walk and talk the talk for the strategic plan to live in Mesa Public Schools. And then, of course, build the capacity and the sustainability for implementation, because we all know that there is a bit of an endurance run when it comes to change. If you want that change to become part of the fabric of the organization, and that is what that last piece will do, it will really help us with the sustainability piece. So thank you to David Sanders for his negotiating skills, and thank you to Dell for allowing us to use those days with ALP to kickstart and move that strategic plan forward again.
So one of the questions that we often hear when we're talking about the strategic plan, the portrait of the graduate, and how all of this works together, is the question is how? So how are we going to work differently? How are we going to put this into place? How are we going to have conversations? So I'd like to turn over the next slide to Dr. Tracy Isles, who will talk to us about what this looks like from a professional learning lens. Tracy?
Good evening. Yes, so if you take a look at our slide, it's a duplicate of one you've seen prior. And we will be kicking off, as Helen said, we really need our leaders to understand and see themselves in the Portrait of the Graduate, not only our students, but also as adults, and how do we model those skills and essential attitudes of what the Portrait of the Graduate is founded in. And so that will be the foundation for our administrators and their professional learning all throughout next year. It'll kick off on June 10th and 11th at our June Leadership Academy, where we're really going to be focusing and honing in on the two strategic goals of igniting a culture of learning and well-being and ensuring equity. The igniting a culture of learning and well-being is where we've already started our work with many of our smaller groups. Jennifer mentioned we've got the Equity Group. We also have an instructional framework group working, which is some principals, some teacher leaders, and directors and specialists who are working together around the creation of an instructional framework and model. And Advanced Learning Partnerships will help us to build a field guide for how we might implement that model, so a toolkit, and we'll be working with that throughout the Leadership Academy and using that as the foundation for the safety, the health, the well-being, and the instructional practices. And then through the, digging into the ensuring equity goal, we'll also be taking a look at what are those specific practices that we can measure our progress along the way through those KPIs? And so the Advanced Learning Partnership Group will help us to identify our progress and our look-fores, and how leaders can take those pieces and model them for their staff. And then we will have these feedback groups and looping in and out on how are those tactics working, the field guide toolkit? How is that working for our collaborative teams to ensure that we're making progress and providing equitable access to this consistent model, these consistent practices throughout the entire district? And so that will help us to ensure that we're meeting our Mesa Public Schools' promise. And so we're kicking that off. And then we've got a year-long plan that we've put into place with an Advanced Learning Partnership and some other partners to really help us with the how piece of that and what it looks like.
Thank you, Tracy. I know there's a lot of excitement and there's a lot of collaborative planning that stands behind the Leadership Academy as well as the professional learning that will happen for administrators throughout the next count, this upcoming calendar year. And you'll be glad to know that our consultants have all agreed to work in a virtual environment with us, but they love working with Mesa Public Schools administrators, so they're looking forward to the day that they can get back together into a group and to be able to celebrate the relationships that they've built with us along the way. And we're going to move on to the next slide and talk a bit about pay-for-performance. So as we've gone through strategic planning, as I mentioned on the last slide, that many of our employees have asked that question about how? How are we going to do it? So you just heard from Dr. Isles around what that will look like for administrators. Well, the other thing that we need to be conscientious about is what are the systems that we already have in place? And how can we connect the good work of the strategic plan to that system? And so for this case, it's the pay-for-performance plan. So every fall, administration comes to the governing board looking for approval of the pay-for-performance plan. And so that will be no different. That will be happening as soon as we kick off school and school is underway. And this year, what we would like to do, and we're still in the conversation phases with our employee groups, talking about aligning pay-for-performance goals and the expectations to our first year of implementation of the strategic plan. So at this point, that would be a focus on the Portrait of the Graduate look force, the goal of ensure equity, and ignite a culture of learning and well-being. One of the conversations that has bubbled up in our steering committee many times is it's going to be incredibly important for our classified staff, our certified staff, and our administrators to have an understanding of what this plan is and how it becomes the way that we talk, the way that we do our work, the way that we reflect upon our work, and then how we think about our continuous improvement within Mesa Public Schools. So pay-for-performance is the perfect place to do that. As I think about my three years in Mesa Public Schools, I think that this is a really great synergy, because for the last three years, the pay-for-performance plan has really built the foundation for the strategic plan work. Three years ago, there was a focus on culturally responsive teaching, that all of our certified staff participated in culturally responsive teaching courses. That has a very nice alignment to the work of ensure equity. Then we took a look at social and emotional learning. That was part of, that was the outcome of a task force. We focused on the five components of social-emotional learning that has a direct connect to ignite a culture of learning and well-being. And we, this year, we are rounding out the three-year implementation of grading practices. When we dig deep into really understanding grading practices, that is aligned to both ensuring equity as well as igniting a culture of learning and well-being. So we've built this foundation that will then springboard the work of the Portrait of the Graduate and the strategic plan forward. So what we would like to do is have, bring the approval of the pay-for-performance to you as a governing board earlier. We'd like to do this in August, because feedback that we have received is that our administrators really want to hear and provide direction and the focus for the year. They want to get that started early. And then that also gives them more time to craft their school and department-specific goals and gives them some more time for implementation. So I wanted to share that with you as a way of connecting dots around the systems within Mesa Public Schools and how we are going to use the existing systems as part of the On to the next slide. So you might be thinking, okay, so you've kind of laid us out and got us up to the summer and the kickoff of the new school year, so where do we go from here? So after we get the pay-for-performance plans going, get those kicked off, our work will be to continue to develop the key performance indicators for the remaining three goals, four of the goals, because we've only aligned those, we've only developed those for ensure equity at this point. So the four remaining goals will have key performance indicators attached to them. We need to launch the branding and the marketing of the strategic plan. And then we need to prioritize and align our time, our talents, and our resources so that we can implement the strategic plan and make sure that it is working in tandem and is well-connected to the master facility plan that you are all very well aware of and how that is working together around learning environments. So it is our hope today to provide an update to you, all of you, so that you know where we are, where we've been, what our immediate goals are to move forward, and just to be able to hear some of your thoughts, because what we are asking for is your support to continue on with what we have laid out for you this evening. Go on to the next slide. And that's all about questions. So we are very ready for questions. We've shared a lot of information with you, much of it is a repeat of the past, but we wanted to contextualize it and put it into our current reality as we are living through what we have all talked about is unprecedented times that requires a lot of resilience. So with that, please fire away your questions.
I have a question. I think it really is based in the professional learning that's going to happen this summer. And so I guess, Dr. Isles, my questions would be to you. My interest was piqued when you talked about the excitement for professional learning, particularly in June. And I think you mentioned collaborative planning. I'm wanting to hear more about collaborative planning. We have Advanced Learning Partnerships that are going to provide us 25 professional learning days, but I want to, I want to hear how the ideas and the expertise of our principals are going to be ensured in this collaborative planning.
Hi, Members Hutchinson. Yes, that's a great question. We are going to utilize, we've got a lot of small little groups of principals working together right now in partnership with some directors and specialists and even teacher leaders. And so they will be part of sharing their expertise with the work that they've been doing around instructional practices and in the instructional framework. We have some instructional design courses that are being developed right now and created through the work of some of our leaders. And they're going to be working in collaborative teams and will be modeling some of those practices through the lens of the Portrait of the Graduate, and our consultants will be doing so as well, so that we'll have breakout rooms and principals can share their expertise on things that they've been doing that have been working. We'll be providing them some tools internally with some of our technology tools, as well as through this field guide that Advanced Learning Partnership is going to provide to them. And then as we move throughout the year through our professional learning plan, when we come together as leaders, we'll, we'll continue to build upon those collaborative teams of principals across the three areas and their expertise in what's been working through the organizational change that Helen had mentioned as one of the tenants of the proposal, in building those high-functioning collaborative teams through the framework of professional learning communities. So while we've got these collaborative teams working at the site level with the teachers, providing that input and that feedback and how that field guide is working for them, the principals are doing the same thing in alignment through those skills and attitudes that are modeled through those Portrait of a Graduate look fours. So we'll be using their expertise as well as gaining their input and their feedback on what's needed as we work throughout the year with our partners through Advanced Learning Partnerships. We've also got another partner through our principal pipeline in the Wallace Foundation working on the instructional framework and the team of principals that are helping to design that as well. I hope that answered your question throughout, throughout the entire year. We'll have multiple collaborative teams working and utilizing the expertise of our principals right here in our district.
I really appreciate that explanation, because as I just heard Dr. Forless say, that everybody must understand the plan. Well, the best way to understand the plan is to connect it to prior practice, prior learning, things that have worked, things that work in our district, not things that are imposed from above or from an outside consultant, but the outside consultant working collaboratively with the expertise of our people. And that would include, of course, at the building level, the classified, the certified, I mean, everybody, I mean, we talked about how we do the work. We've got to make sure that the people that are doing the work are being allowed to share their expertise and their experiences. And so I'm really glad to hear that, what I'm hearing, I think, is that we are actually going to model one of our essential skills, which is collaboration. And that's what, that's what I'm hearing you say, and that makes me very excited, because we know that the best planning comes from the bottom up, because, because people that are doing the work best understand what is a best practice for their school, their kids, their community. They're the closest to, closest to where it's happening, where the action is. And so I'm really glad to hear you say this. This is, this is hard. This is not easy. This is really hard.
Yes, yes. And it won't happen in two days. Yeah, yeah. June 10th and 11th will really help us to kick that off, and it won't just be our principals, it'll be our administrators from all of our departments across Mesa Public Schools. And, yeah.
Yes, I'm looking at the pay-for-performance, because that's where the board comes into play, because we are going to be approving that, as you say, in August. And I'm assuming that would help our principals to start their, I know they will have meetings prior to the beginning of school, but that will help them to reinforce those meetings and have some concrete parameters of what their teachers should be shooting for. So I have, I'd like a little more explanation of the pay-for-performance. And maybe you said some of this, so I apologize if you did, and this is a repeat, because there was a lot of information, and I'm trying to absorb it all. So as you decide what that is going to look like, you're definitely going to have to break it down into bite-sized pieces, like the elephant, I think, Marcy, you alluded to. This is really hard, and there's a lot, and we're just moving forward as we take bites out of that elephant. So how are you going to determine and who is going to be working collaboratively, as we've been talking about, to determine the pay-for-performance goals that those teachers are going to be working towards?
President Minor, I'm happy to answer that question. So I'm going to take us back to past practice within Mesa Public Schools over the last few years. So you'll remember grading practices. Holly Williams and Don Foley led a very comprehensive group of people together to identify five grading practices. So it was broken down into those bite-sized chunks by saying, schools are going to choose in year one, they're going to choose two of the grading practices to implement and reflect upon. The next year, two more. And then by the third year, it would be all five of the grading practices. We've done the same with the five competencies of social-emotional learning. Funny enough, Funny enough, the leading research group, Castle for Social Emotional Learning, there's five competencies. So we've done two of the competencies two years ago, this year, two more. And so we will do the same thing with the five goals. So we'll take those five strategic plan goals. And this year, we're just going to focus on equity and ensure a culture of learning and wellbeing. Then we'll do the next two, and then we'll do the fifth one. And that doesn't mean that we ignore all, you know, we're not going to wait to do aligned resources at the very end. As Dr. Lesser talked about, we're always thinking about aligning our resources. We're always thinking about engaging our community. But when we are talking pay for performance, because there's an opportunity for all of our staff, including our substitute teachers, to earn some incentive pay. And so this helps to provide incentive to the change we're asking for. So pay for performance and incentive pay are one in the same. So this will be the incentive plan that is connected to pay for performance. So breaking it down into the smaller pieces. And then what happens is, as Tracy had talked about earlier today, there's many tools that our principals will be able to use. They can use the look fours in the Portrait of the Graduate, but we're now calling a field guide. We're not sure if that title is going to stick because we need to talk to some more people. But that toolkit or that field guide, there will be tools in there for principals to choose from. And then that's how they will write their specific school goals. And then department leaders write department goals in the same fashion. So then you also asked about, so who was involved in all of that? So crafting the goals is every department leader. And then every department leader has their employees sign an attestation form that they were a part of that decision making and part of the pay for performance planning goals at their particular school or department. But before we even get it there, what happens before we bring the plan to you as a governing board is we meet with the presidents of each of our employee associations and make sure that they have an understanding and that they are supportive of what these goals look like. And then, you know, we have a conversation to make sure that this is palatable and that it's going to be meaningful for all of our employee groups. So that might be more than you asked for, but those are all the connection points.
President Minor, if I may just add a thought here as well, that historically, our employees, our employee groups have focused on creating relevant, responsible goals. There has been a time in the past where we've been working on some things and then we had them create goals that there wasn't this clear relevance to working on these goals. And I would tell you that our employee groups, as Dr. Forless has described, whether it be social emotional learning or grading practices or equity of instruction in the classroom, that when we can align it with the good work that improves our practices, our employee groups and departments are, they are really on board with that concept of alignment and relevance to the work that they do. So I think that's a continuation of some changes that we've made within the last year or two.
Well, I think that's significant to say, Dr. Lesser, because this is not just merely a check off the box. We've got our pay for performance, this is what we're going to check it off the box. This is an opportunity to become, to have a consistent theme throughout our district that we can manage and then be rewarded by. So I always have considered the pay for performance a great opportunity and also a privilege to have the ability to do that in a district of our size. And so I take it very seriously when we're talking about approving it and understanding at how complex arriving at the decisions that that process is. So thank you for the description because that was more than I've heard before and I was able to absorb more in this conversation. So I appreciate the detail.
Sometimes we created, sometimes we created in the past, President Minor, members of the board, goals that were just another thing. And people looked at it, at the goals as just another thing. And we've worked to make them the thing that we do, that has focus and alignment and relevance. So I do appreciate your thoughts on that.
This is Helen. If I could just jump in with one final comment about that. I think the strength in this year's plan is based on the strength of the strategic plan itself. And that is the ability for each school, department, group to truly personalize the goal for themselves because of the fact they can enter each of the goals where they are in their strengths. So it's not a one size fits all goal. When you look at, you know, ensuring equity, each school will be able to assess themselves on where they are in that framework and moving towards advocacy and set their goal to move them forward from wherever they're starting. So the equity and being able to just set the goal in a more personal fashion, I think will resonate better with our employees as well because we will honor the strengths that they already have in place.
As a board member, there would be times in when we would be called upon to review and approve some of those key indicators. And as we progress through, just trying to get a feel for when those, if there's a rough time, you know, range in which we would need to be prepared for that and look forward to those coming forward.
Board Member Peterson, oh.
Man, Andy.
Board Member Peterson, those 25 days that we have with a consultant will build out the rest of the key performance indicators. And as soon as we have those built out, we will bring those to the board. I anticipate those would be probably in the later part of the fall of next year to make sure that we vet enough before it actually gets to the governing board.
Okay, I apologize for how uninformed I'm going to look during my questions. But back on that ensure equity, when we clicked over and looked at the ensure equity and we saw this grid of acclimate, adapt, advance, and advocate, were all of those sections, what, is that the look fours we're looking at? Or are those the key performance? Like, I'm confused a little bit about, since that seems to be the one you have done, it also seems to be confusing to me. So tell me what I'm looking at on that page.
Jennifer, would you like to walk Board Member Richardson through that document when specifically around what exactly are those components? And the intentional design behind them?
So I would say that it is a little bit different than the look fours. Because the look fours that are connected to the skills and attitudes in the Portrait of a Graduate are really documents that help teachers and students understand what it will look like in a classroom setting if those outcomes are being aimed for and they're being practiced. The progression for the goals is really a description of, if you look in that far right column, in terms of culture of equity, that last description in the advocate column is where we want to be. When we're doing this right 100% of the time, that's where we want to be. That one, we want that to describe our behavior. And so, and I'm going to pause because I see you talking, but I think you're muted. So I want to make sure I'm not going too fast. Okay. So it's really a way for people to look at that as a progression, thinking, I want to be over there on the right, but where am I? Which one of these descriptions is more aligned with my practice right now? And so what are my growth points? What do I need to work on? What are my opportunities for learning? What am I doing well already? So each of those rows is a progression. And we chunked them out into those categories because it really made sense to us that we want to build a culture of equity, that we're always using equity as the lens for decision making when we're thinking about instructional practices, to how we spend our money, to how we allocate our resources. We know that in order to do that, there's some professional learning that has to happen. We need to have a common language. We need to be talking about equity in the same ways. Equity really shows up the most in the classroom. If we don't expose all of our students to the right level of rigor and help them master our academic standards, then we're not doing our job around equity. So that's where that instructional practice piece comes in there. And in order to make all of those things happen, we have to have the right systems in place where we're putting equity at the front of our decision making. So that's how that document is set up. And I'm going to stop there and see if I've answered your question or if I need to provide some more clarification.
And probably more basic than that. So this is a document that's telling me the key performance indicators? Or it's a document?
Those are not, that is our goal. So that's what we want to be. And the key performance indicators are going to be the measurement points that help us know before getting there. And those are being developed right now by that group of principals that came forward and said, we need to do some work around equity. So those are being developed right now.
Hypothetical one, like, you know, in your mind or after you've heard it, it's hard to deal in hypotheticals because somebody's going to say, I heard it at a board meeting that this is what we're going to have to do. But just take my practical brain down to ensuring equity in a classroom. I get, you know, I say, okay, good, actively embody the equity model. But how, how will you know that a school does that? Like, what's, give me an example.
So I would say in terms of instructional practice, something that sometimes happens with good intentions is that we let kids off the hook. We see that they're struggling with content or that they have some gaps in their learning. And so we lower the bar for them. And so when we are always acting with equity at the forefront of our decision making, we're going to say to that student, what do you need to reach the bar or get over that bar? Instead of lowering the bar, we're going to look at you as an individual and say, what do we need to help you reach that bar? And so we're going to really maintain those high expectations and engage all of our students in that rigorous learning.
Jennifer, this is Pete. Jennifer, this is Pete. Is it possible that, so we have this progression of the goal and in a very simplistic form, I'm not saying it will be a KPI, but a KPI could be every student has a device. And that gets us a step closer to having equity of opportunity from a digital standpoint. I'm not saying that will be the KPI, but that's potentially an example of a KPI. You know, maybe another KPI is every student is met with on a quarterly basis by their teacher to discuss their progress in the standards that are set at that particular grade level. That might be a key performance indicator if we're achieving that. So there is a difference between the progression and the metric that will determine whether we're moving on that progression. Is that, would that be a simplistic maybe viewpoint of that?
Yes. And even thinking, you know, and I do not want to overstate my understanding of developing KPIs because one thing I've learned is that I didn't know a lot about that. So this, I've been learning a lot in this process. And Dr. Carlisle can absolutely speak this a little bit better than I can. But thinking about even things like graduation rates or participation in AP or IB classes, then what are the leading indicators along the way that are showing us that we are preparing kids to have good outcomes in those areas? So a lot of different ways we can be thinking about KPIs.
Yeah, those are even better examples of equity. Do we have the right representation in AP and IB programs and honors classes across all of our groups of students? That's an excellent example of, I think of a KPI of equity.
And KPIs, this is Helen, KPIs may evolve over time. So let's stick with the AP example. Let's say an initial KPI might be to increase student enrollment in AP courses. The second wave of that may be to ensure that the enrollment of students in AP courses reflects the demographics of the school that the AP courses are being offered at. And then the next level of that KPI may very well be that the students are receiving fives on the AP test are reflective of the demographics of the school that is offering that test. So this is not a one and done, the KPIs are, will be set and never change. Like any good strategic plan, the KPIs will grow with us. And once we achieve something, we may very well look to what's the next level of achievement we can reach.
Thank you. I just think that if I'm a teacher and I'm coming in and I'm looking at this, or a parent, this all seems a little couched in hypotheticals and theory and not really like, what's that going to mean at my school? What's that going to mean in my family? So that we're going to get more as we get the KPIs or we're going to get, because I think if I'm, if I'm, most of our families looking at this, it feels like I don't, I don't understand how that's going to make a difference for my kids or how my kids are going to get to do in the classroom because of this groundwork we're laying. So I think that's an important thing for families and teachers to understand that the part that they're going to have to do isn't necessarily ready yet. This is just part of the groundwork for them.
Absolutely. The other thing is there will be an entire library of materials for the strategic plan. And they will have different audiences. For example, Jennifer mentioned in her presentation that the look fours are really targeted for teachers and students in the classroom. Now, will parents have access to those or a community member have access to them? Yes, they will. The language might not be targeted to them because they're not our primary audience. But we may have some other documents that are specifically written for the appropriate audience. I certainly see that happening in our five strategic goals, that this is not by any means the only material that will be available about the strategic goal. This is what is needed for us to be able to build it out. And then I see, I almost said a more simplistic, and that's not the appropriate, a more approachable document, a more approachable web presence. Dr. Forless mentioned the concept of, you know, we'll have a dashboard about KPIs to show where we are in the progress. And data is wonderful and data tells us where we're going. But I also see us supporting that with anecdotal evidence, whether it is a story from a student about how they were able to demonstrate the KPI that we measured, whether it's a video of something that happened in a classroom. We will support the KPIs with evidence that is approachable to our community.
I just, I think we did such a great job on the Portrait of the Graduate and helping families and students see themselves in that, that I think if some of them, if they click on these ensuring equity or I don't know, what are the other five? Ignite a culture of learning and wellbeing, they're going to go, okay, you locked me again. Like, this is supposed to be how I'm getting to be, to have an ethical, resilient student. And I'm missing this bottom step. So I just want to make sure that we keep a clear vision of how this is going to impact our students and our families as we go through. And it's very approachable for them.
You know, Jenny, you make a really good point. Because I know when we were on the steering committee and we were doing the work, it took me a while to figure out that so much of this is for our teachers and principals and that the parents will never see the detail that we are looking at, that they will see a much simpler, more straightforward, where this is quite complex. And it will be very, and I look at that and I, my first thoughts are, I don't get how this comes right down to the child. It's, it all sounds really good, but how does this affect my Johnny or my Suzie or whoever it is? And so I get what you're saying. That was my thoughts too, until I realized that this is the layers before we get to what the families see or what they understand. Is that correct? Am I saying that correctly? At least that was my understanding from what you were saying.
President Minor, you're saying that perfectly. This will go through many different layers of sophistication. And we need to make sure that not only do our parents have the, have all of the right language in parent friendly language, our students need parent friendly, our students need student friendly language of what they of what this looks like, so they have language around, what does it need to be ethical? What does it need to be resilient? And so what you're seeing right now is very much at the administrator, we haven't even really gotten into the teacher language yet. This is very much administrative-driven, so that we can start building out with the rest. This is the foundation. We've got to build it out so that it's accessible to all.
A little more training from me then, too, would be, when we talk about the look fours, and if we use the ensure equity model that was discussed, are the look fours, then the descriptions that's underneath acclimate, adapt, advance, and advocate, under the four categories of culture of equity, professional learning, instructional practices, and equitable systems, and then something else?
Board Members Peterson, you're jumping right into a debate that we've had around, what do we call those things? We had labeled them on the side, actions. We're like, well, they're not really actions. Are they strategies? Like, what is that? That is a set of, so we've kind of landed on, that's a set of behaviors, that's a set of, so we're still going back and forth with, what would be the right word on that left-hand column that you're talking about? Because the look fours are, that's what you would see in practice if we are embodying and embracing this idea of ensuring equity. So they are look fours, but we're calling the Portrait of the Graduate look four. So we've got to tighten up our language so that it's easier. Jennifer, do you want, or Helen, want to speak to kind of our debate around, were they strategies? Were they actions? Were they steps? Were they, we didn't want to put them in a hierarchical order as if they were steps, that one has to happen before the other, so tie ourselves into a circle.
Yeah, and I'm learning, as I'm working with Dr. Carlisle and Katie Poncheck around the development of KPIs, that there are other layers of strategy and tactics that are going to come out of those documents to get us to the outcomes there. For me, it's a really, it's a description of the outcome that we're striving towards. So when I look in that advocate column, that's, you know, eyes on the prize, we want to be living over there. That would be a description of what business as usual looks like in Mesa Public Schools when we achieve our goal. And I don't know any other succinct way to describe that. It's, I guess you could say it's a look four, because it's what it would look like if we were really living into that goal. So that's how I see it.
Dr. Forless, maybe to just provide a little bit of clarification here, when we use the word look fours, the word look for is aligned with the portrait of a graduate, right? There are portrait of the graduate look fours. And the progression chart that Jennifer Echols has shared, that really just shows a progression to get to a better place of performance and fidelity in the area of equity among teaching and learning with our students. So I think it's important that we're not using the word look fours in the progression document. We use the word look fours in the portrait of a graduate look fours. And so I think, Mr. Peterson, we need to maybe, you know, come back the next time when we review some things with maybe a chart of where these words are associated, so we can continue to put connections together about how the plan looks and feels, and as we have more conversation about it.
So specifically then, I guess, to my catching up here, then, under community indicator, or a community contributor, under essential skills, we have bring people together and contributes to the community and world. So I'm assuming then that the brings people together and contributes to the community and world is the look for?
Board Member Peterson, that is the look for, and we have a series of look fours to get to that. That's a separate document on our website, just called the Portrait of the Graduate Look Fours. So that's just the summary of what we wanted to clarify our language is, is what that means. So there's a whole document teachers are using for planning right now.
I'm sorry for not being up to speed.
Oh, you're perfect. We have the luxury to live this, so.
You do, because for me, this is very complicated, and I was on the steering committee, so it's understandable that I would, I would look forward to another study session where we can break this down to simpler, straightforward. You gave us a lot of great in-depth details, from beginning, how it started, starting that path, to where we are today. Can we, and I'm the only one who may feel this way, so you may just have to meet with me if other board members don't feel this way, but for me, I like it to be broken down even further, to where we can see how it will end up in the classroom, from what we've been doing to the classroom, in more layman's terms. Or in other words, I need a dummy-down version. Because I think there's so much meat there, and you are giving us great information, but I'm having a little difficulty absorbing all of that and processing it, down to the point of the student. And so maybe if we could have something more like that in the future, although this is good stuff, I don't want to, I'm not saying anything, and Marcie probably gets it. I'm just not coming from a teacher or a principal's perspective or administrator.
We will be happy to do an update, and we will bring it back to you, because this is, we're back in full swing again. We pressed pause, and we're back at it. So we'll bring another summary to you, an update.
I think it's such an important thing we're doing. It is the, it's the theme of our district. It is, it's our culture. We're turning it into everything. So I think it's really important for the board members to truly understand it. And I, again, may be the only one that would need to have it that simplistic, and I've been on the steering committee, so, but I understand the level we were doing, that was understandable, but there's a lot more from that point to the, down to the classroom. Yeah, that you guys have probably been talking about outside of the steering committee, so I need to catch up, is probably what, is a better word. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is, this is, it's still being, it's evolving. Yeah. Yep, we'll get there.
Okay, we need to probably take a break now, because we only have 10 more minutes before we start our regular session, and we like to try to give ourselves a little time, a little bit of a break, everyone there. So I need a motion to adjourn, unless there's any other comments that we need to ask before we do that. It's now 6:20 or almost. So with that, can I have a motion to adjourn the study session?
I move that we adjourn our study session.
Okay, we have the motion from Mrs. Richardson, and it's 5:19, or 6:19. Do I hear a second?
A second.
Thank you, Mrs. Sears. A second for Mrs. Sears now for a vote, and I will start with Mr. Peterson.
Aye.
Mrs. Hutchinson. Mrs. Hutchinson, thank you. Mrs. Sears.
Aye.
Mrs. Richardson.
Aye.
And Mrs. Minor, aye. So that is a five to zero for adjournment, and we will see you back here at 6:30 for a regular session.